To you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, undegraded and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, no rejections. Matt is not going to be here. We'll have to make tonight, Tammy, the chair.
Alan, who are the vice chair?
Sherry Van White, secretary.
Patricia Darnumber.
Mary Carding, secretary.
Yeah.
Go ahead. And we got Sherry, and we got Patty, and we got Mary.
Okay.
We're all good. We all know each other here. We don't have newbies out there today. The next item is our, a little for agenda, but I want to add something to the, I don't know where to add it. You know, I just want, I'll just share with everybody. And this is more for the PC. You guys wanted to, even though, I asked Mark if we could like not do a meeting, you know, and we can. We could, he said, "This guy's the limit," and that people, you know, say cancel meetings or don't do meetings, whatever, and we can hold a special meeting if we wanted, you know, if they needed. So, I wanted to, I didn't know how to put that on the agenda, like if I should put it under communications, but I think it's something we should just all maybe vote on and agree if we decide we don't want to hold a meeting in August.
Are you giving us a day off?
That would be due to the, to the law on the agenda and stuff, too.
Well, it's just, I think that, and I feel like that the township board, some of the people wanted, maybe they thought we were, you know, I know they wanted to save money with like our special meetings or our master plan. And I thought, well, we're busy, we had to get that done, so I didn't want to cancel that. But we are kind of like, know about a little bit, so we're working really hard. So it's up to you guys. If you want to come in August, we can. If we want to vote to just come in September or do August and not September, you know.
I moved to cancel August.
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
We'll modify it. And we can put that, I don't know, I'll just put it under new business, how's that? Because it's new and I'm giving it to you guys. It's my communications to Mark. So there would be cancelling or rescheduling. And I guess we're at number two, like whenever we need to call a meeting, we can do that as well. And just with canceling, we'll make sure that we give enough public notice.
Oh, so say, we probably have to do two weeks, what was that?
He didn't say, he just said plenty of time. I mean, I think a month is good, and we'd have to tell Julie.
Most planning commissions do that when they have real life loads or there's conflicts going on, they'll just cancel meetings.
Well, I don't know if you want to do what conflicts are, I don't know, those small.
Well, I mean, earthquakes and conflicts.
Oh, I see, yeah.
When you solved all the conflicts out there, again, there's nothing going down this way.
Okay, so I guess, I can't, I can't now, I don't know even how that all works, I don't want to. So I don't really believe I can, I'm just putting that out there.
You're adding it to the agenda.
I'm adding that, but I need to hear somebody move to approve how I changed the first and second. To add canceling the PC meeting discussion on new business. I don't know what to add to new business. And so Sherry adds, she's first. Do I hear a second?
A second. And that's going to be, when are we going to discuss it?
We're going to discuss it at this meeting, under new business. I'm just adding it to the agenda. But I wanted to give you guys the background, because I know Patty had asked me about that when I said I hadn't contacted Mark yet, but I did. Okay. All right.
I'd love to approve the agenda.
All right, Sherry moves to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
How second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and just to be, all in favor for the addition earlier to indoor.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Then the next thing on our list is the approval of the minutes from our June 10th, turn 25 meeting. I will approve the June 25 meeting. I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Communications, I've kind of covered that, but I didn't have a second. All right, so then we are to our first call of the public. Number one, number two, or number three? Anybody? Okay, so we're going to close the first call of public. There's no public hearings, right, Anne?
Correct.
So then we've had to unfinished business. And we got, I know I've given this to you before, but I still just made copies again. Actually, I came here until I wore them to our ones. Did you guys get it? I mean, Anne, you want to go on, I mean, I looked at the signed things, I see that you guys kind of changed it. You got rid of, like residential, like dwelling, like more referring to a house, one paragraph there.
Yeah, we clarified some language, just to make it easier to read for not only the public, but for myself, who has to enforce it. I think Mark and I had very good discussions, so I'm just kind of looking to see what you guys think. But I think this is a huge improvement for what we have right now.
And then like for the commercial buildings, I was noticing like it's like one square foot. So the sign, if the building's bigger, the sign gets bigger.
Correct, yeah.
You sure?
Which we didn't really change any signage size per se, it's the verbiage that was confusing that I need changed.
Yeah, I just, I read through the sand too, and I looked at the changes. It is, it is clear as far as the ag and the residential showing the same lot and how you deal with those. And you go independently, each one's each one assessing.
Yep.
And the 8.8-1 has been very abbreviated, but it makes it a lot clearer. And I think it's, so I'm good with what you guys come up with on this.
Thank you.
I was fine with it too, like as to your view of Mark, and you're the one who has to administer it.
Right. So until it gets tested, I think this is our best, best thing. I can't remember exact words Mark said when we were discussing all this, but signs is a pain in the arse, it just is. So I think this will help us. Yeah. So I do think this will help us out a lot.
Okay.
So, do we, are we going to do the final copy of this for our work list?
We have to decide if you want to accept this and, you know, move to approve. Okay, in the sense of where I will then ask Mark yet to send a file draft to the county, you know, and he'll, you know, he'll.
I believe we still have to have a public hearing first.
That was going to be my next question.
Oh, yeah, we have a public hearing, yeah. Okay. Sorry about that.
So we all need to, yeah, we've got a cheat sheet out. Yeah, I don't have to get a public hearing, so you guys don't have to send a public hearing.
Okay, so I'll be telling Mark to give us a nice clean version. You know, I had to do that. And then after that, I think we can set a public hearing, or we can set it for sometime in September.
Just at the beginning of the regular meeting?
Yeah, it would, yeah, it would be at the, or it could be some. Or it could be October, I don't know what to schedule. But I mean, we do need to.
I wouldn't push it out too far. I know you guys want it a day off, but we've been working on this for a year. And I know solar's gotten in between there and all, but.
Yeah, we could have.
I would list, like, off the desk.
Unless we had a meeting in August, I don't think we could have a public hearing by then, because I won't.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I get it from Mark yet.
Pushing it to October seems extreme, or something like this.
I just send it, we depend on Mark's. I know sometimes he's off in September, that's the only reason I send it coming in.
Well, yeah, I mean, barring anything, barring anything unusual.
Hopefully, I'll get to get this to him. I'll get, probably wouldn't get it to him. I might be able to get to him tomorrow if we approve. If we don't, you know, I don't. I have fringe ideas here. I'm going to be gone this weekend, so I don't want to.
Right.
I won't be able to attend any of this till next week.
That's my.
I have to attend tomorrow. All right, do, any more discussion on the signs?
No, I think the new version is much clearer, easier to understand.
So, do I hear a motion to move forward with approving this and sensible, have a public hearing? And if we have to, Mark?
I like the motion to move this matter forward per the, the planning consultants.
Yeah, because we'll move to make recommendations before, after we.
Yeah, I mean, the April 30th amendments by the planner, move it forward and.
Alan, first. Do I hear a second? Sherry, second. All right. Who pulls that second? Well, the next thing is our master plan review. All in favor, because you guys have just assigned a five. I always forget that. The next thing, I just want to say our master plan review stands, we have that all done. And I have sent the minutes that Mary took, and we kind of reviewed through our emails. So we'll make sure we liked everything tomorrow. And I sent the last one to him, I haven't heard from him, hopefully. That's that one we really have to deal with, like getting him in here. First, I'd like for him to send all his feedback to us. Clock it over, and then have him come in and go, huh, okay. Because I have no idea what he's going to say, but I think we pointed out. Okay. So then we will move on to new business. Anne, tell us all about what's going on here with the commercial.
So, this is, at the moment, this is a proactive approach to the ordinance. The Weller Road building that we all affectionately love has sold. The gentleman who owns it is proposing moving his wholesale parts business, automotive parts, into the building. We, Joe and I have sat down with him in regards to getting the court case from 1997 vacated for the M1 zoning, because M1 doesn't even exist in our zoning ordinance anymore, nor does it really apply to what he's thinking about doing. Our current ordinance does not cover warehousing. So you have two communications, you should have gotten them on the email for me.
I did, guys.
One is from Mark in regards to adding warehousing to the table in 33. And it gives the use, the warehousing use at wholesale car under a special lane use in the ordinance. Mark suggests buy right industrial, but Joe and I were both concerned that that would open that building up to some uses that might not be cohesive to that neighborhood. That barn is a white elephant, as we call it in the assessing world, because why Bob Damon ever thought there would be a good idea to have industrial use in the middle of all of Burma's stuff is beyond me. Obviously, it's pre me anyway. So, we also talked with John Harris, our attorney. He suggests that the owner file for a conditional rezoning. That way we can basically agree to certain terms and agree to vacate the court order and get that building into our, our current ordinance. So I'm just kind of looking at your guys' thoughts. The owner has been kind of slow in his process on his side. But Joe and I feel that this is something, whether or not he keeps the building or not, is probably going to be facing us in the future anyway. So like I said, we kind of want to be proactive. And if I'm talking in circles, I apologize.
No, I mean, it's all just, yeah, it's all.
So, the gentleman who's proposing it right now that owns the building, it's all online sales. It wouldn't increase in traffic on the road. It would be in-person retail sales, it's all mail order.
So where does he get his parts? Does he get them delivered though?
He operates out of Southfield right now, and everything is torn down over there somewhere.
No, I mean, he's selling automotive parts.
Yeah.
But he'll have deliveries, won't he, of his parts? Just that?
Right, but you're not talking.
I know, he tried, yeah, I get it.
It's not going to be any worse than the Burma Farms sunrise coming up and down the road.
So, so if this applicant, if he wants to pursue this, he just has to apply for it and ask us, you want, has to request the conditional rezoning.
Correct, but, but our, our ordinance doesn't have him anything to rezonate into. His type of business.
But Mark, but Mark has already, you've already contacted?
Yeah, Joe and I have been in contact with Mark and John before we brought it to you guys.
Okay.
So, so am I right to say that the, first of all, there has to be a new zoning designation created, then he.
A category, yeah, not zoning, but just a category within the zoning.
But then he would have to apply to that for the conditional rezoning for the category of zoning. So there's, there's quite a process in front of us.
Oh, yeah, this will be quite the process, yeah.
Okay.
If I remember when I was reading the emails too, it gets us out of the litigate, the main industrial.
Yes, that, the whole goal will be get to vacate that court order from 1997, when the taxic was sued.
So I was curious when I had read that, and then just saying with the conditional rezon, I'm not trying to bring up a sore spot, but I'm just saying with solar.
Right.
They were saying that it's a conditional rezon, they put the conditions on themselves. And then when that ends, the lane just goes back. So how does that work with this? With this, like, does it go back to the industrial? Or can we, can, can we put it a conditional re, like, you know what I'm saying, when the conditional rezon goes away?
I think we can request a condition on where it goes if it sees separations. If a court case gets vacated, that's, that's gone.
That industrial, whole industrial.
If, if we can get a judge to sign off on that, which John is pretty confident we can, this would never be a problem again. It would just be a matter of whether or not we can get a condition to that it goes back to AR. You know, something within our zoning ordinance currently.
So the landowner is, of that building is good with putting the conditions, I guess?
It doesn't matter what he thinks right now.
Okay.
I'm going to be quite honest with you, it's a matter of, do we want to be proactive and add this category into our ordinance so that we're covered?
Totally want to get rid of, I get it, I'm just thinking more, I guess I'm just thinking a little bit differently. And not, not saying, not negative against it.
Right.
But just like, I'm feeling like the conditional rezon, remember we always were told, we can't put conditions like on DT, they're doing it themselves, you know what I'm saying? So, and, and don't, I don't even, I don't want to say this, because I, it's going to sound wrong, but it's like if, I see, we're just going to do, change the category, but this landowner would have to write those conditions. And I don't know, we can influence those. You see what I'm saying?
I think about a clarification from John on that.
You see what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I do understand.
Okay, that's all. I mean, I totally like want it to work out. I think that would be great, but I just.
Well, not, not to say you guys can make a decision on this tonight, you know, it's just, it's something we need to start thinking about. That, that building isn't a non-living or township.
Yeah.
And with it being in a residential agricultural neighborhood.
So.
Which I understand is a sore spot because of solar as well, so.
Right.
I get it.
So.
Go ahead.
So if that gets dropped, industrial gets dropped, does it automatically go to ag residential?
No.
We have to make it ag residential?
Yeah. Either we have to make it go back to AR, or the guy who owns it, if he's going to do something with that property, he has to request.
See where I. Because that's where I, I get what there's, we're trying to do, but just like where it's disconnected to me is, again, the example of the solar, the conditional rezon, it doesn't, it goes, it just goes right back to AR, right? And it's like, so why does this conditional rezon?
This isn't conditional. This is court ordered.
Okay.
The M1 is court ordered right now, we don't have a.
But wasn't John's email saying we do a conditional rezon to get us out of this M1? Like, why wouldn't it go back to M1 after the conditional rezon? Like, say the guy's done selling parts and.
Because John's going to get the court case vacated.
Okay.
We want this M1 to disappear for armor, because it doesn't even exist anymore.
So we're going to get the, this vacated so that he can ask for a conditional rezon? Okay, that's the.
But, but John will not file if you reject the email?
Yeah, I don't, I guess I don't have those in front of us. I remember reading it though.
So the conditional rezoning would be a request that should be consistent in our, within the use. And then in the process, while we're going through the conditional rezoning, in that process, he will go and get that, hopefully get a judge to sign off, vacating the court order.
Okay, okay. So then if that's vacated, he does his conditional rezoning, sells his parts for 30 years, and then it could go back to.
AR or whatever we agree to. Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay.
I will get that or clarify.
I just, you see where I was, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I think.
Because I was like, well, what, for 30 years?
This building's a complicated situation, no matter what we do to it, so.
Okay.
I'm sure we would get more detail on it too.
So this, what you sent us to, this is that district of that building, and this is what we want to get vacated right now?
Yeah, that's from our 1991 ordinance, which is absolutely three ordinances ago.
Okay. Well, I don't think I'm going to, and what are your, what's your thoughts on that, you guys? I mean, I'm all for.
I'll be completely honest.
To vacate this.
To me, that building's perfect for storage. It's not, it's not good for industrial. It's not via freeway, it's not via railroad track. I kind of feel like storage is the best option for that thing, because Burma's doesn't own it, obviously. Or they would have bought it a long time ago.
Originally, was it their building?
No, it was Bob Damon's, Unimber.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't Unimber.
Okay.
So I'll get this all spelled out a little bit better.
Okay.
And, and bring it back to you.
I guess, yeah, it's something that we can take in action.
Yeah, I just wanted to get your thoughts for the moment, so.
It's not, it's not for the township, and we just got to get the process going.
Any other special note, you guys? Check mark by hand. And then the next thing that we added to the agenda was the, I mean, what are your thoughts on, I guess I want to ask Anne, what are your thoughts, should we have a meeting in August? And it would, like, what we just discussed with this. Do you think you're going to have everything, like, things together for us in August to move on, to make some more? Can we wait till September or not?
It probably can wait till September, but, I mean, the owner of the building's not knocking on my door saying where are we at, so.
So, go ahead, Alan, you guys have something to say.
Well, yeah, just, I like, I like the idea of being able to do that, I think we got it right to do that anyways.
I guess I just would want to say for you guys, like, just to say, Anne, something does come up, like with this, we may have to just pony up and call a special meeting at the last minute.
Absolutely.
You know, and I just want people to understand that, and I will try and make that work, just to make sure in the township.
Okay, how do we do that with notify and just hang it in the door? Do we have to put it in paper with this? Can I tell them?
I mean, we just, a special meeting, yeah, I think a special meeting would have to. I mean, it took them 15 days, but.
And to cancel the meeting, do we have to really post that, or?
I think we can, Julie, but on the website, if it's a problem, I can't put it in the paper. I'll ask her if it's in the.
I think, Erin might be able to correct me on this, since she went to that class. I think you just have to post it, and then you take 18 hours. Did they do that, cover that in that class you took?
For a special meeting.
Yeah. I think it's 18 hours, but that one's covered, Julie, though.
Who gives a short amount of time?
Okay. I mean, then that's probably not going to happen, but I'm just saying, I want to be sure if we have to.
Okay. So.
I saw it.
Is that where we're going?
Is that where you are?
I didn't get a chance to say it, but, did you get that, Mary?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to vote, did you want to vote on that?
No, she got Sherry's second, and I saw the favor. We're good.
What type are we talking about?
We're talking about canceling the August meeting.
Our practice of canceling meetings, and you.
I think it's good to vote on it, yeah, just make sure that we're all, I mean, we might not have to, it might be overkill, but I think it's a good idea. I mean, mostly, you know, like when COVID happened, we just emailed each other, and said, hey, it's all done, we're not coming in. All right, so, future meeting's agenda will not be August 12, it will be our September meeting. And I will email Julie on that, try to get that out to her tomorrow. Is that coming right though? Is that what it is? I don't really have a. Well, the next thing, I'm going to give the township board a board. It's not very long. Because Matt's not here, and he emailed me. Make sure I was. Can't operate the phone. Okay, the township, and Anne, you can tell me if I missed anything. Basically, what Matt said is that the board recommended the re-appointment of Tammy Higgins as the PC chair. And there was discussions on MTA's online subscription as to renew or not. And if any classes interest anyone, please let supervisor Parker know.
There's a, we have a membership, but there's an additional, words are escaping me tonight. Option to where we can have more access to certain classes and stuff like that. If I understood it right.
That's what I understood.
Yeah.
So if you guys are interested in taking classes, let him know, because I think he was just trying to decide, or the board was trying to decide which membership they should be in. And that's it, anything else, Anne?
No, we were only here like 36 minutes.
Okay. All right. And so then now you're next for the zoning administrator board.
I have issued 24 permits for the year. Of those four, I mean, for new dwellings, in addition to those six waivers. We have, I don't really have any absolute complaints I'm working on right now. We have had quite a few fires this year, which is kind of interesting. We've had two coal burns and a house. And a garage. So be careful, that's all I really have to say about that. Just be careful with your stuff.
I think you'll like barbecuing in the garage, or what?
I'm not sure what happened on the garage one. Actually, I'm not sure what happened on the barn one either, but that was a bad one on current road. But it didn't go to the house at least.
So hopefully no one was hurt.
Nobody, nobody's been hurt in any of them, I guess.
Okay. All right. With that, do you have anything else?
No CPAs.
No CPAs. And then the next item would be a second call of the public. Go ahead, Greg.
Hey, Tammy, I just wanted to.
Hey, Anne, I, I just wanted to, I think you were talking that you could not, I think your words were you could not offer any suggestions to the, like, the DT solar one, that you couldn't offer conditions.
Right.
But I think if you read Mike Homier and the Joe Parker conversation, I think in the, in that's question three at the bottom, it says, it is common, this is Mike Homier talking, it is common to employer about whether the developer would be willing to offer X, Y, and Z. So I think you're, you're able to offer, you can always suggest things or offer things. Whether they accept it's a totally different story. So I think, you know, as long as you can't, you can't make it a condition, right? But if they make it a condition after you've suggested, so if you reread that, I think you're going to say that maybe it's slightly different than what you were talking about.
Yeah, I guess it was meaning like, I know what you're saying, yes, we can suggest.
Because I think Joe.
We can suggest things.
Yeah.
But we can't say, I don't think I could sit there and say, well, you have to put this condition down here before we're going to approve it. And that's what was going through my head when I was speaking.
Got you, yeah.
I, I wouldn't want, I just was like, oh, we couldn't do that in that situation, like, with this barn guy.
We would still be going through the special land use after the rezoning as well, so we'd have some say in that.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all new territory for all of us to be able to.
The way I see it is, is, and you both have the right, the, it has to be initiated by the applicant. When I say initiating conditions, then they come to the table, and all bets off, let's talk about it. And, and it's a negotiation, rather than us demanding certain things coming out of that, so.
Exactly, and, and just, just the one thing on the parts business, because I work at Ford's and I manage the parts business. So, parts, parts mean a lot of different things. Some people might think of parts as brakes, pads. Some people like me, I have to think of engines, transmissions, that sit in a warehouse, and you, they're called seeds, and all they go. So, it's really, and, and if they're going to store oils and gases and those kind of things.
He did indicate there would be no fluids.
Right, so as long as you guys, that, that might be where you suggest some things.
Right.
To just try to understand what he's looking to put there. I don't know how big this building is, it, you know, could be really large, and that.
32,000 square feet.
So it's relatively large.
That's a little bit larger now.
Right, you could put things like engines and transmissions and big things. Not to say that's wrong, anything wrong with that, just, it's big things.
Any kind of new use like that is, is going to go through a, a use evaluation by building codes. You're going to have an MSDS site, and we're going to, as planning commission, know what that is they're putting in.
They have to have the safety racks, and you have high road drivers, they have to have a license.
Wasn't aware of that, but yeah, that makes sense, okay.
I used to do quality engineering in the Ford P Paps, so I know a lot of parts, so.
Ah, P P.
And Chrysler's 21 step PSO style as well. I know parts, and I know a lot of them, and that.
It can get messy if you don't, I mean, like, I worked at Wick Som, so that, that land couldn't be used for too many things after we got done with it. So it's, you have to be careful what you put there.
Yeah, I'll make sure, well, we'll see if anything happens.
Yeah, you can worry about that when we get there.
Okay, anybody else?
I just have one sort of suggestion. I know that you guys have been working on the master plan, and I noticed that Conway has put up like a survey on their website with some specific information about what they're working on to get feedback from the community, and I'm just putting that out there for you to maybe take that, because I don't know exactly what you're working on. I know that that will come later when you're soliciting feedback, but that might be something to start thinking about to be putting up on the website for, you know, any changes that you might be making.
This is like smaller and earlier.
Yeah.
What you got, what would you, what was, what would be your suggestion? Because it will come, go through a public hearing. I mean, we just like went through it, and there was like old data in there, and we're, you know, we updated it, and we had thoughts about, solar was put in there, land conservancy, things that, you know, want to improve. I put in there transportation, like sidewalks and light paths to keep people safe. How, you know.
Yeah, things like that.
Mark will bring us in and say, this is why you can or cannot do it. You guys are totally welcome to come when he comes here, I'm going to make sure, you know, he goes through all of our minutes, and, and I could post those if you want to see what we wrote about, what we sent around to him, but yeah, I can do that.
And we don't, you know, like, we're not privy to, you know, what was changed in the signs, you know, it's not posted on the website, so we don't really know, you know, what alterations you guys are kind of making, so that kind of information would be great if we could see it before the meeting.
Oh, that'll be posted for the public hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, I mean, I think sometimes we don't post it, like, because what if we said, oh my God, no, this is trash? We're not going to post every iteration of it, but, yeah, for the public hearing, we would have it. That's why I'm going to send to Mark and say, give us a nice copy.
Well, the survey, I would say, go take a look at Conway's, because they have information on there, just asking questions about, you know, what, what sort of things would you like to see changed, so.
And some of that, just to say, too, like, I, I'm more like, I would love to be able to say, yeah, let's send out surveys to every household and do that. But then again, it's an expense.
No, on the website.
Yes, but I mean, there's people who have to manage that data.
Right.
And track it, and compile it into a nice format to tell us what are our residents.
But wouldn't that be information, though, to know when you're changing the master plan? Like, that's what I'm thinking.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying it isn't, I'm just saying it, the decision isn't, it would have to, we have to talk to our township trustees.
That's why I'm putting in a suggestion.
Put those resources out there to say, okay, we're going, who, who, who could we hire, you know, to do this? Or who has the bandwidth and the time to do this and can do it? And we're going to pay them, and they're going to compile this information, and we're going to have stamps and envelopes, and send the surveys out, all that kind of stuff.
Well, I'm not talking about mailing stuff.
Or online, creating it and putting it online, and getting the feedback.
So, yes, just as a suggestion, Tammy, there's a Word document, and you can go to a Word document and see, and, and we could have seen the master plan from 2020, and we could have seen all of your edits. So somebody has already gone in there and done their edits, and it has, it has a link, and you can see person one edit this, and you'll see a line through.
Oh, you track changes, I understand track changes, but we're not doing the.
No, 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 I think we were just suggesting that in the future.
But there's some.
There's something more to be shared, a little bit more, I'll say, mechanically, automated, right? Because there's no word.
I mean, just so you know, I'm not, none of us are creating these documents like our land planner is, I mean, and I can give PDFs of that, but like, I know what you're talking about with track changes, I don't know.
Well, I, I was saying that if, since you have a website, if you were able to get a document that's a workable document up onto the site, where all we can do is see it and read it, right? But you guys, we would see all your edits going on all through that, so like, when you were doing your changes here, if you were, if somebody was typing, instead of writing on a piece of paper, if you were typing into the document.
I know, you'll see it.
Those all would be changed, right?
I just, I'm, I'm trying to, Anne, I'm trying to say that, we, we just are not that technically savvy.
We're just saying.
And that is not the program we have here.
There is.
We are all at, right, we get a mini. A website is set up the same as like Conway's, so a survey would be something that would be in your wheelhouse, you know?
Okay, and I don't even run that website, so.
I know, it's not you personally, I know that.
I mean.
Oh, they're using.
I mean, I'd love to have an overhead screen, too, where I could put things up and have pointer on this, but, you know.
Don't.
Tammy, I think Kohafta also sent a postcard to every resident for that, for the master plan, you know? So they did that as well, so it, it would be really nice if you guys consider doing something online, because our neighbors are doing it, they care about their, and I'm not saying you guys don't care, I'm just saying they care about the feedback. So both of those townships did it, so, different ways.
Anybody else got any comments on that? I will ask Mark about public feedback methods, reasonable ones, or ones he has in his experience found successful. And see what he has to say.
Okay.
And then I can just tell the township board, like, this is what Mark said, public would ask about this.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Okay, any PC members have any comments? No? Turn your remote off? All right, well, if there's nothing else, we'll close the meeting at 7:41, adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.